We're ready? Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for December 5th, 2022. The City Council meeting will be conducted in the traditional in-person format at the location listed above, which would be City Hall. For convenience, the public may view the meeting virtually using the go-to access information that's found on our website. Please note that public comment will only be available in person during the meeting. The remote meeting access is for viewing purposes only. Those viewing the meeting remotely will not be able to provide public input via the remote meeting access. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashower?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Goodman?
Here.
Alderman Chrisell?
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
And Alderman Widener?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Would you please stand as you are able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need the green light. Before we get into the business of the meeting, we have one of those happy-sad occasions to deal with tonight. Chief, would you come up, please? And Kathy, come along. Hopefully, most of you know that Chief Toronto is retiring after 16 years of exemplary service for the City of Warrenville and 30 years for the City of Elmhurst. A very distinguished career. He's taken our department from that friendly, small-town department to that friendly professional department and done a remarkable job. And this is a certificate of appreciation which in no way can exemplify the depth of the appreciation we have for Chief for what he's done for us the last 16 years. And the quality of the officers that we get in this town is phenomenal because we have a great department. I believe a couple of years ago, we were listed as the safest city in the state. That does not happen by accident. That happens because we have a good police department. And the person responsible for that is right here. That's the happy part of the message. The sad part is, he's off to a new adventure without Warrenville, but he's going to come back and visit us. So I would like to officially say our appreciation to Ray. A certificate of appreciation is hereby awarded to Raymond Toronto upon his retirement from the City of Warrenville. Thank you for your exemplary work and dedication to the City of Warrenville Police Department for the past 16 years. And again, Ray, the depth of our appreciation is very, a lot deeper than just a certificate. It's your turn now. And you have to say something.
Thank you also very much. Somebody once said, much smarter than I am, that if you find something that you love and you do it for a living, that you never really work a day in your life. And I guess I was lucky in that I found two places, both Elmhurst and Warrenville. Great places to work, a great staff to work with. The elected officials were wonderful. You folks should all give the people down in Springfield and Washington, D.C., a lesson on collaboration and doing what's best for the people in general. But again, I can't believe that I've been here 16 years, but it's been a pleasure. And I'll miss it, but there's times to do other things in life. And I think I have to go out there and contribute to the stock of golf ball manufacturers. And then I'll be playing some golf, losing a lot of golf balls, probably driving the golf course marshals crazy, but it'll be fun. My wife will keep me busy, and I'm sure that I'll be active enough dodging the frying pan because she comes after me. But, you know, I want to thank all the people here that made me feel so welcome and were always so cooperative with the things that we try to achieve here and accomplish. And I believe Warrenville is in a very, very good place. Chief Benia, who I've known for, oh, 20 years, is going to do a great job. I firmly believe that in my heart. He's got the knowledge, the expertise, the people skills. So you're in good hands for the future. My officers, my brother and sister officers, I can't thank you enough for everything that you not only have done, but do, day in and day out, for the people of this community. You deal with professionalism, dedication, honesty, and you're some of the nicest people, truly, that I've ever had the pleasure of working with. I will miss all of you. I'll miss the city, but I'll be back and visit and probably go to the Fourth of July festivities and summer days or whatever. I just won't be wearing the uniform this time. But again, I will, I'll miss it. I'll miss law enforcement. It'll be the first day since I was 21 years old. So I've spent about two-thirds of my life as a police officer. Two of my three sons are police officers. The third one works as a dispatcher for Duconn. So it all kind of stayed in the family. And I'm very proud of all of them. My beautiful wife, who a lot of people think is my younger sister, but she isn't, she has been very, very patient with me, linchpin of our family. I can't tell you how many special days and occasions I missed because of shifts I was working or when I was in detectives that there'd be days I'd be gone for days at a time because we had a major case that we were working on. And it was just I'd pack a small bag and go, I'll see you when we're done and leave. So, but it's been a very rewarding career, and I'll miss that. And a part of my heart will always be when I hear, see the red lights on a car or hear the sirens, I'll look and a part of me will be with that officer. And I'll say a prayer for that officer's safety, as I will for you. So my brother-sister officers here in Warrenville, thank you. Thank you so much for everything you've done to make my job a pleasure. And may God please take care of you and bless you, give you a long, happy, healthy, and prosperous career. Thank you very much, everybody. Evening.
And Ray, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, for a change. A bonus. Okay, let's move on to citizens' comments. We have, I think, four people have signed up this evening. If you would come to the lectern and give your name and your address and give us your statement, that would be appreciated. Dale Williams, would you like to lead off?
Dale, excuse me. Dale Williams, 3 South, 435 Briggs Avenue. Just a couple of things, just repeating some of what I said for the public hearing before the zoning board. Appreciate the work that city staff has done to try and get some of the project shifted with particularly the tower over to Thornton site. I know there's a lot of work that went behind getting some of those things done. Glad that there was able to be some separation there. Obviously, the design of the building has been dramatically redone. Really appreciate the time and the effort that was invested in making that a much more aesthetically appealing building in the neighborhood. There are a couple of things on the private well remediation plan, Exhibit E. And I think one of our neighbors, Larry, is going to probably speak to some other issues about that. But a couple of points that I would just make, underneath the subpoint, establish private well baseline functionality. I'd like to see the phrase "dynamic and static tests." It says the testing is here, pump assembly, existing conditions, existing water levels. I'd like to see that language. That language was in the report that we had prepared by a third party, Rumpy Sharp Engineering, and they recommended that dynamic and static tests be run. We talked about this with the zoning board, and I'd like to see language like that included just so that that is done, not just the level of the water, but actually level of the water under both of those scenarios. And then I think probably having somebody like Rumpy Sharp or somebody, it just says "the city," and I realize that might be private contractors, it'd probably be good if it was spelled out that there's a third-party contract. Somebody who's not necessarily an employee of the city, not that I don't trust you guys, but it never hurts to have an outside company looking at some of those things. One of the things that I also would note then, as is common with so many things, making sure that whoever is then, if we have to enter into agreements relative to people coming onto the property, I'd like to see some language in there about liability insurance for whatever independent contractors may be used to make sure that those people are covered, not only for their personal, the personal liability as to physical injury, but also in the event that there is damage to a well during one of the tests. I don't know how all that testing gets done, but I'd like to see some kind of statement about liability. I understand that may be a part of the agreement, and if that's the case, that's great. But if it's not in the thought process or it's not written someplace, I'd like it to be reflected that liability and, you know, that those kind of coverages would be in place. Again, I think some of the other points are going to probably be raised by some of the neighbors, but those are some of the things that I noticed as I read through the document there. Thanks.
Thank you, Dale. Fred Bevire?
How you doing? Fred Bevire, 28 West 672 Townline Road. Used to be on the console, Ward 1, and I was kind of the guy that oversaw a lot of stuff going on with Faywell Dam and the berm's going up in town. And everything is really great and working fine since a lot of issues were, you know, gone over. And I still go out on my bicycle. I check stuff. Bauer Burn got raised up and redone, and there's trees starting to grow on the backside, which you can't have on a levee. They can't have any wood species. I talked to Colin, and he said that they don't have a flail mower. To do that stuff, you need four-wheel drive on the other side. It'd be nice if maybe the city could do an intergovernmental agreement with the school district and, you know, maybe mow that a couple of times a year for them and work on getting them trees out of there. And I think it would be better, best for all for this town. And also keep an eye on the river road berm, which I see some trees, but I think they're not in the levee, they're down more towards the river. But it'd be great to just keep an eye on it, and I appreciate your thinking about this for me.
Thanks, Fred. Larry Sacatelli?
Hi. Larry Sacatelli, 30 West 180 Estes. I'd like to talk about the remediation plan. Also, I'd like to talk about on the agenda today, Item A. I would like to postpone the vote for the recommendation and the waiving of a second reading so that we can go over the options that I have presented. I believe everyone should have a copy of it. And we need to go through a lot of this stuff. There's things that were in the Exhibit E that Dale had also talked about that are part of this. I don't know if you want me to read all this stuff? Okay.
We have copies for all the elected officials and staff.
Yes, you have. I made 25 copies, so you should have.
We'll make sure they're disseminated.
So again, I'd like to see if we can have this postponed so we can have a, maybe it's a private meeting with the planning commission, whoever, so we can go over these and make a negotiation. I know you told me you would work with us on these items, and these are my thoughts of what these and how some of the language needs to be changed. Again, Dale had brought up the part of the city voting on what is deemed damage to the well. And I'm sure not many of you even have a well on your property. You're probably all in city and really don't understand the mechanics of a well or hydraulics and how the pump itself that you're planning to put in, your high-volume pump, could affect our local wells. You're going to pump 770 gallons per minute. At my house, if I pump 100 gallons in a day, you know, you can see the significance of how much water you're going to be using. Also, the point of the term is only two years, and in the retrospective, long-term effects and the growth of the country, of the town, that I think two years is too short of a time. And that's why I've given stipulations for those and how we can adjust that. So I'd appreciate if we could postpone this vote for tonight and have a separate meeting to go over this and kind of iron out this stuff so we don't affect 21 homes.
Thank you, Larry. My advice would be that we'll give this to the elected officials and to staff, and it'll all be taken into consideration. What we have is a framework tonight that's the result of many, many, many meetings already with many constraints from many different people. It's not our policy to change that at this meeting. So we will take that into account, and I will reassure you that the city is going to look after your best interests. We have no interest in causing you any grief. So whatever is in there that might be helpful to make it a better document, we'll make sure that it gets in there when staff takes a look at it.
So you're going to vote on this anyway tonight?
Unless someone pulls it off.
Okay. So I would ask our alderman if he would bring that up for a vote and say, let's postpone this for tonight.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Seibert?
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. Last Thursday, December 1st, on public TV, the program Chicago Tonight discussed an issue on property taxes. If you've read the paper or seen the newscasts, there have been very large increases in City of Chicago property taxes. You may also know that the City of Chicago did not raise the tax rate. So this public channel was looking at obtaining the reasons why the taxes were increasing. Fritz Cagney, the Cook County assessor, was one of the presenters. He was asked, why have we had this large increase in property taxes? Mr. Cagney said, there was one cause for 60% of the increases. He stated, this is the TIFs, the Tax Increment Financing. And he stated that this affects all the property bills in Cook County. So if your objective is to protect citizens from hidden tax increases, then you must understand these systems of taxation and establish methods to measure the movements.
Thank you, Bob. Is there anyone else who didn't know they needed to sign up who'd like to make a comment this evening? You're welcome to come to the lectern if you'd like. Okay, we'll move on to the rest of the meeting then. Official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor. Just Holly Days was this weekend, another wonderful event put on by the Park District. Great turnout. It was a wonderful time. The weather was perfect. I'm thankful for the Park District for making that happen for us yet again. Of course, always the goal is to have these low-cost, actually free events that people can come to without having to leave town, have a good time with their families. So this was one of those, and it was good to see Santa again, too. So he's off doing some other work, I guess, in other town at this point. But he did stop in Warrenville. We had a great time. So thanks to the Park District for that. Clerk, do we have anything? Okay, thank you. Alderman. Okay. We'll move on then to the city administrator. Very good. And city attorney. Thank you, Brooke. I need someone to give me a motion to approve the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener?
Yes. Before I approve the agenda, is there anyone who wishes to pull any items off of the agenda for discussion? Alderman Kruckenberg?
I'd like to pull Item A off the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, with the removal of Item A off the agenda, I move to approve the agenda for the December 5th, 2022 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second for an amended agenda for this evening. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Ashower?
Aye.
And Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Motion carries. The agenda is approved as amended. We have a couple of sets of minutes, three sets of minutes need approval also. Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, thank you. I move to approve the minutes of the November 21st, 2022 City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the November 21st, 2022 City Council Closed Session Meeting. And finally, to approve the minutes of the November 28th, 2022 Public Safety and Finance Committee Meeting.
Second. Second, Alderman Lockett. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. The minutes are approved. The consent agenda for this evening, as amended, Item 6B, Accept Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Recommendation, Waive Second Reading, Pass Ordinance 02022-46, Approving the Final Plaid of Subdivision, Declaration of Easements, Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions, Special Use Permit to Allow the Operation of a Special Public Use and Variation from the City Code Zoning Ordinance for a Municipal Water Tower Facility at 3 South 660 Route 59. See Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation, Waive Second Reading, and Pass Ordinance 02022-47, Amending City Code Regarding the Administrative Adjudication of Parking and Compliance Violations. D, Offer First Reading of the 2022 Property Tax Levy Ordinance 02022-48 for the Levy and Assessment of Taxes for the Fiscal Year Beginning May 1st, 2022 and Ending April 30th, 2023. E, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Pass Resolution R2022-69, Approving a Renewed Contract with Gallagher for City Insurance Coverages for Calendar Year 2023 in the Amount of $452,809. F, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Direct Staff to Include $10,000 in Additional Funding for the FY 2024 Budget for the 2023 Independence Day Celebration. G, Accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and Approve the Revised Employee Personnel Manual. H, Receive and File Report of Invoices Paid Up to November 30th, 2022 in the Amount of And I, Authorize Expenditures for Invoices Due Honor Before December 19th, 2022 in the Amount of $361,546.72. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Bromel.
Second. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashower?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
And Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Motion carries. The consent agenda as amended has been approved. We will now return to Item 6A. Alderman Kruckenberg, did you wish to bring that forward, or would you prefer someone else to do it? I mean, yes. Okay. Alderman Davalos?
I'd like to move to Accept Plan Commission Recommendation, Waive Second Reading, and Pass Ordinance 02022-45, Approving a Final Plaid of Subdivision Special Use Permit for Final Planned Unit Development and Final Planned Unit Development Plan for a Municipal Well and Iron Filtration Equipment Building at 30W 121 Estes Street.
Second.
Second, Alderman Goodman. We'll return then to Alderman Craig Kruckenberg. Senior moment for comments. Craig?
I'm wondering if there's a benefit to having Public Works Director Kukler or someone from Public Works give a brief overview of the private well remediation plan, just to get it on public record?
Sure.
Someone explain it.
Director Kukler is with us virtually. Phil, are you there? You are, there he is. Director Kukler?
Your volume is down.
Yeah, the volume is way down. We hear just a little sound. It's better. Just a minute, Phil. Okay, we have.
Is that okay?
If John's prepared.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so our plan is, before we set any thresholds, what we need to do is we need to gather all the data. We need to understand where these pumps, where they're set at, and the aquifer below the water table. We need to understand what the conor depression is for the well that we will be pumping and the area of influence. Once we gather all that information, we will be working with EEI, Design Engineers, who will be helping us with this well. When you speak of dynamic levels and static levels, that is part of the plan, okay? We need to understand all that. We can't put together a roadmap until we gather all this information. We can't put together a roadmap until we gather all this information, though. Okay? Once we collect all that information, we will be working with the EEI, and we will be monitoring these wells. In speaking with professionals and looking at historical data of our well sites, I can say that we have not seen levels in the aquifer drop. They typically will, within the first couple of years, you'll know, we will know, if we impact those wells, how detrimental, if at all. We'll be able to tell that. And we continue to monitor these wells, not only after the two years, but we monitor the aquifer every month. And we have been since the time I've been working for the city, which is going on 17 years. So we do have an understanding of what the aquifer is yielding.
John, are you confident that once you get the information you need, that you'll be able to protect our citizens, that they will have no harm from this that isn't either compensated or made up for? That we'll be able to do what we need to do without negative impacts to our citizens?
Absolutely, and that's our goal, you know? As we're looking out for the residents and making sure that we provide, that we know what we're talking about. And that's why we have to gather all this data and then lay it out and see. We don't, we don't know that anybody's going to be impacted. And until we start actually getting into the private wells and measuring where their well pumps are set, how much below the water level they currently are at, what the cone of depression is from our well and the area of influence, how far that branch is out, then we will be able to start putting the pieces together and providing, providing the council recommendations on whether that is to lower one or two wells or three or more, and that will be for the council to decide. Or if it does mean that maybe we need to extend the water main through there and have people connect, and then that will be another discussion.
Okay, so what we're getting to tonight is a framework to allow this further discussion and investigation to make sure that we do this properly, right?
Correct.
Okay, and the thing for everyone to remember is that we have to protect our citizens, but we're also have the responsibility to protect the community, and we have to balance those two. And that's what we're trying to do, and there have been hours and hours of discussions and meetings to make sure we do both of those things. And that is our intention to a person up here, and it's our intention with the staff also, that you are not negatively impacted in a way that you are not taken care of for. So also the reminder that this is somewhat time-sensitive. We've been trying to get this done for years now. Every month, the delay means it costs the city more, costs the citizens more. So we have two things that we know for sure. It'll cost more if we put it off, and two, we will look after your interests, but balance those with the community interests. This has to be done in some way, shape, or form, but we have no intention of causing you any grief. Anyone else? Who would be, would you like to do that?
Yeah, I was saying I could provide that.
Someone, Dale?
So I just wanted to provide a little additional response to a couple of the comments. This Exhibit E is really meant to be a very broad, general plan about how the city will proceed to develop the details going forward. So for example, the access to the properties, when we are at the stage where we're ready to start having the city's contractor or the, you know, the third-party contractor perform those initial assessment tests, you know, we will develop an access agreement that will cover all the liability issues, the timeframe for how long the test will take, and how much notice we'll give the residents for when we'll show up at the property. So all of those details will be fleshed out. It's not meant to be left out because we don't intend to provide those details. It's just difficult to do it now before we even know when the test will take place or in what order. So a lot of those details will, will be filled in. This is just a general framework for how the city plans to proceed to establish those more detailed plans.
Thank you, Brooke. Alderman Davlos?
Thank you. Yeah, I think we just, Exhibit E in here, I think you kind of summarized that when you were talking about what the process is going to be as I read it, but I just want to reiterate for the council and for the public that a lot of those promises are written here. It's not just that we're talking about it, and yes, it's a framework, a general framework, and we haven't drilled all the details down because we don't have all the information, but actually, the vote tonight does commit us to not abandoning you. It's Exhibit E, and the last section of it is, it talks about what we will do if there's impacts to those wells. And so we're voting. I mean, it's not like it's an idea. We're actually saying, this is it. And in the last bullet point down here, it talks about if this doesn't work, and this has been said already tonight, that water will be brought to those neighborhoods, and city water will be there. And so, and, and other, if we can fix what's there, we will. And so it's not an in-theory thing. We're basically planning our poll to say, voting tonight to say, we will not abandon those, those properties and the wells and what's going on, whatever that is. So I just want to make sure that you understand that that's what we're doing. And it's not just, it's in the documents that we're voting on. So we will, the city will be there. Whatever it takes, we will be there, so, thank you.
Alderman Ashauer, did you have a comment?
Just have a couple of questions and comments. How, how deep will that well be cased, you know? Is it similar to other wells we have in town?
I anticipate that it'll be similar to the other wells, yes, but we don't know. And to be quite honest, we don't even know what the yield will be for the city's well, okay, until we drill it. I would assume that we're going to hit, go down to about a level of 300 feet and possibly have the motor and pump set somewhere at around 200. There have been discussions, and there's going to be more discussions on whether or not we go maybe just a little bit further. We want to stay in this aquifer. We don't want to get into a deep aquifer because there's water quality issues with that, too. So we want to stay in this aquifer. So how deep can we go into this aquifer? That I cannot answer right now, but the engineers that work for us can.
I just thought maybe add to historical data on how far the, the casing went down, whether it would offer protection from the pool of water that we're concerned about.
Sure. The, so your pumps typically set at about 170 feet. The casing, I want to say is probably close to, in the range of 75 feet or so, 80 feet.
Okay. The, for all the residents, obviously, this kind of fits in the category of unintended consequences, and it's part of what TIF is created for. It's to allow us a tool that gives us the financing to fix these kind of problems if they come out. And just, just for anybody that's interested, I, I'm on a well, and I was in the water well business. I have a pretty good understanding of the mechanisms, how they work, and the aquifers and, and all of that, so I understand pretty much most of what you're talking about. And I don't want anybody to run out of water. You know, I mean, they, we're doing this because we have to. We, we don't have any choice. We made a commitment that not everybody agreed with, develop an area in such a way that there's going to be enough people that we have to put in a water tower, and we have to provide them with the health and safety of a, a well and a pump that, that will make sure we can put a fire out and provide them with, with a good water supply. But the, I can tell you, from my standpoint as an alderman, I would make every effort to make sure that you guys are protected and that whatever goes on doesn't wait until you're out of water. I've been to all those places, and I didn't like it, so I know you won't. So on that, I will look at everything you've presented and try and help out with it.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else? Okay, may I have a roll call then, please?
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davlos?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
And Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm sorry, ma'am, we generally don't have citizens' comments once we're done with the discussion. Okay. All right, motion carries. That's that. And again, one more reassurance that we're not in the business to cause our constituents and fellow city dwellers problems. We will do our best to make sure that everything that you've given us tonight is taken into consideration. Okay, we have nothing under regular agenda, nothing listed under unfinished business, although we have a ton of that. No new business tonight, and no closed session. Alderman Goodman?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Alderman Lockett. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn. The motion carries. Have a good evening.